Good morning, it's February fourteenth and this is a Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting.
Commissioner Stottemeyer.
President.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Chair Weymeyer.
President.
Commissioner Dunn.
President.
Commissioner Dickinson.
President.
Now the pledge of allegiance. Good morning.
It's great. Lord, thank you on this day, the day of love. We remember that you are love, your nature is love. And as part of that, love is stewardship. And we thank you for these stewards you've given our county. And pray that you would help them to lead wisely and well. And continue to bless or their efforts in doing so. We appreciate the efforts that go into leading us as people. And we are grateful and thankful. We pray that this day you'd be honored in all things that we do. We ask these things in your name, amen.
Correspondents. Then we have a public comment.
We do.
Go ahead.
Gary Wahlberg.
Come on up. I won't read it to you again. I won't read you the policy, it's on the agenda.
You want me to?
Get too rowdy. Said if you get too rowdy, we'll...
Well, uh...
Talk about it.
I've got, uh... I was here a couple of weeks ago. We talked about snow removal. I don't think ever did get an answer as to what their reasoning was as to the way they did it this year. I would really like to have an answer. Another one is, do we prioritize any of our roads? Like back in the day when we had state or had county and township, the county roads and the township, we had the main roads that sort of got most of the attention. Do we do that anymore? Or do we just classify them all as the same thing? Because we still have roads that are basically main roads. Another comment. At the corner of Eisenhower and Reno. We had a road rock there last week. I believe it was a week ago Monday. One mile north. There was one bad spot in that road. On a hill. Seepy spot. We rocked the whole mile. The road had just been rocked within the last two years. And I think it was rocked last year. We could have gone any direction from that intersection. The roads are terrible. They never even got graded. Reno Road from Old Fifty-Nine to New Fifty-Nine. I think Commissioner Dunn made the comment when I was in here before that that was designated when they put in the new highway as the main connecting road. We finally seen a maintainer on it last Saturday. That's the first time. I worked two days with a tractor and blade filling in holes. Just to make it a little bit smoother. Now, there wasn't a whole lot of rock on the road. So I did have to go to the edges. Probably went out eighteen inches to two feet to get rock, which was buried in the dirt. I can't understand why we can't keep that rock on the road. I, I got a pretty good theory. If you ever follow a maintainer down the road, as to why rock gets pushed off to the ditch. And they still disagree with me. They run their blades so straight that when they're going down the road, it goes around the end of the blade. You guys up here, most of you have been on a tractor and blade. If you run that blade straight, what happens? It goes around the edges. You all know that. You set it at more of an angle, you bring more of that stuff back. I think there ought to be a little bit of common sense there. So... But I just, you know, and when we rock these roads, who decides on what roads to be rocked? I've been told that it's the maintainer man. That he's the one that decides where he needs rock. Does our road boss ever go out and check? And see if maybe we need that rock somewhere else instead of on that road? Because I think if they would have just gone and checked Eisenhower, they would have said, why are we rocking the whole mile? When we got one spot. So it looks to me like it's a waste of a lot of money on rock. If you're rocking roads that have been rocked, more of it than what really needs. So I think maybe a little bit more attention ought to be paid to what we're doing. Other than that, I don't have any more comments. Thank you.
Our consent agenda today includes meeting minutes February seventh and solicit bits to replenish our stock of cohorts. No move. Have a motion?
Commissioner Stottemeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yeah.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes. We have one item of business and Paul Bean will be presenting it. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. The item before you this morning is the resolution to continue with the rural opportunities zone funding. This is the program that the state kind of created, I think, maybe two or three years ago now. That is designed to, if we have somebody that comes back into our county and is working in our county, there's an opportunity for the county and the state to partner to help provide some relief for their student loan. So it's a way to bring back some of those college graduates into our workforce. And you all graciously approved initially to fund that. And I think we've got three or four Janet.
We have three. And two of them are in year three and, I'm sorry, two, yeah, two of them are in year three and one of them is in year one. So, and there, it's a five-year commitment. So we have a couple more years left on two of them and three years left on one. Um, last year we didn't fund any, you guys didn't put any dollars towards the program. But we had already committed them, so we have to continue paying out those people. Paul asked me to look up the number that we had in the program, but we do have some others that are waiting to be in the program. One is qualified pending funding coming available. And then we have one more that's working to get their application done in case funding becomes available.
So I think the question before you is, one, I think we're committed to funding the ones that you've already committed to. But it's a question of, do you want to open up funding for the two applicants? Is that right? Which would, again, reminder be a five-year commitment to help them with their student debt.
Are you getting any businesses that are stepping up to?
Have not.
What about the city of Ottawa?
Have not.
None of the, none of the applicants, none of the applicants that are waiting or the ones that we have that are already approved, none of them are City of Ottawa. They don't work for the City of Ottawa. And so, I mean, the City of Ottawa could put funding in for businesses that are in the City of Ottawa.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah.
They have not today.
I think we've had this discussion in the past, it's something initially we tried. I think for, in the right situation, it could be a good tool if we had a new industry or a industry that really needed to recruit a certain worker, you know, it could, could be a tool. So for that, but it's not one that we necessarily felt like we needed right now or had seen a windfall of benefit from. So we decided not to, I think last year, put anybody new into the program and kind of let it sunset. And to me, that's still the way I'd like to go with it. If we, it's there. It's like, say, it's in the proverbial toolbox. So if just the right need comes along, another city, another organization, even if it was a really good chance to help the right business, we could, we could look at it again. But I don't, I don't care to grow the program or deviate from the idea of kind of letting it sunset for now, so.
What if it was a, somebody that was going to work for the Franklin County? Would that make a difference?
Well, I think that would put it more like employee benefit. And if, especially if it was a highly skilled, really hard to find position, then yeah, I mean, we all the time could look at, you know, recruiting, putting some money towards recruitment, you know? I mean, if Derek left, we may have to go from hiring to finding our next administrator because they are so rare. So like I say, if we, I can see a situation like that, but I don't put that in the same silo as economic development. Other thoughts? Roy, Don, Rod?
I think it's always been a good program for the county and cities and everybody to participate in.
So would you be in favor of funding these two new applications?
I guess my, is, is our representative people, Paul and Janet, are they see that, I mean, they see the papers? They know what's happening there, you know, or what is their feeling towards it? Are they recommending?
Yeah, I, I would say, to be quite honest, I've been disappointed in the response from the business community. I think it's a great benefit that could be offered. You know, I think of especially healthcare and school districts and education, but we just haven't seen a strong, I haven't, Janet, I don't believe you have either, seen a strong participation in that. I, you know, I think it's important that we could, we honor the commitments we've made. And I don't think you all disagree with that at all. I, I believe if we don't, you know, if we do what we did last year, I think it's still, just like now, we're having a conversation. We could come back a year from now and say, hey, we've got some energy from a certain business. Or maybe we get something in Proximity Park and that really drives it.
I'm thinking that's what you said last year, but I just want to hear.
So I don't, I, you know, I would not be in conflict with a decision to continue as you did last year. That would be my position.
I think it was appropriate for Paul to bring this to you. I think it was appropriate for the county to pass a resolution and set up the framework under which this could happen. But the government itself actually funding it is a, to me, is a different thing. And the businesses, I mean, we set up the framework hoping that the businesses would embrace it, that they would contribute the money. Thus far, we haven't seen that. So I, I think it's a tough ask to expect the government to, which is essentially what you're saying, Cole.
Yes.
And I, and I agree one hundred percent with that position.
Is that something you've approached either of the chambers in the county? I mean, you know, they're, they're mainly the business people, you know?
We, when we initially got it, we really, I really pushed it out quite a bit. Last year when we, when we didn't fund, I kind of stepped back. But to, to Derek's point, it's probably a good reminder for me because it is an umbrella. And the businesses can step up and utilize it because you've, you've activated it. And so that's probably a good reminder for me to push that out again, Don, and, and remind people that it's, that's an option. Even though it's not county money, but it's, there's other resources available.
As we did last year.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so it, basically what you're doing is enabling businesses and the communities, so Ottawa, Wellsville, to participate in the program if they so choose.
What is our commitment at this point?
It's three people.
Three people, fifteen hundred dollars a year for five years. So they have to, they have to keep up their reporting. They have to keep up their status as employed. There are things, criteria they have to meet. But we have those three in there and we have to see them to the end, which is five years.
And so basically, the county provides fifteen hundred a year and then the state matches that with another fifteen hundred. So they get three thousand a year up to fifteen, maximum, up to fifteen thousand of student debt relief if, if they qualify for that maximum.
Again, they're not going to get more than what they have
Right.
student loans
Yeah.
available for. They're, it's not like they're getting fifteen thousand when they only have ten thousand dollars in student loans. So they, they have to report every year how much student loan debt they still have and stuff like that.
Was there anybody in favor of allocating new money towards this?
Anybody pressing for that?
Didn't sound like it, so. Then a motion would be to approve the resolution to au...
Well, this kind of reminds me of the old days when they had two, counties paid two for our state junior colleges. They had a declining balance until it sunsetted. And so I was the question whether public money should be used for this kind of purpose like this. And so I'd be reluctant to allocate public money to student loan relief.
All right, well, I think we're all on board about not allocating any new money. So a motion to that extent would be to approve a resolution to authorize Franklin County to participate in the rural opportunities zone student repayment program for the calendar year twenty-four, but not allocate any new funds to the program. There are motion to that extent.
No moves?
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson? Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Staff reports. Derek?
Yeah, just real quickly, retreat over the next couple of days. This is something we, we've done several times now. As you all know, absolutely no decisions get made at the retreat. This is just an opportunity for us to efficiently have high-level discussions on a number of topics. And that helps staff hone in on what needs to go on study sessions later, what we really need to prioritize. A lot of numbers, a lot of data. There's not going to be any surprises or anything you haven't seen before. But just want to reiterate, you know, we don't go make decisions, do anything like that. It just helps us as staff get lined out for the year. Cole, thank you, that's all I have.
Lot of numbers. Paul, anything else?
Morning again. Just want to invite you and the public to an event on February, excuse me, February twenty-ninth. We'll have our youth entrepreneurship challenge at Ottawa University. And we've got six proposed businesses. These are kids from, actually from fifth grade to twelfth grade that are participating this year. And they'll present a written business plan to a panel of judges in advance of the event. And then that day, they'll do a oral presentation to a panel of judges. And then we'll have a trade show throughout the time of the event. So from, excuse me, from about a little before ten until eleven, that'll be opened up for people to come and see these kids present their trade show and talk about their business. And I'm really hoping the community will show up and watch these kids and help support these, these young minds that are really pretty amazing. It's a pretty big deal. This is our first time to get this off the ground. And the winner of our event will, will qualify for the state competition this spring. The winner of our event will receive a thousand dollar cash prize. Second place will be seven hundred and fifty dollars. Third place will be five hundred dollars. And then what we're asking the public to come and see the trade show. And you'll get a coin and you can vote for your favorite trade show. And the winner of that contest will receive a hundred dollars. The winner, as I said, goes to the state competition. And there's over seventy thousand dollars in cash and prizes at that competition for these kids from across the state. So I just encourage you and, and encourage you to invite others and certainly those listening to please come on February twenty-ninth to Ottawa University. You'll be on the second floor of the Ganglish Gibson Building. And we'll have some beverages and snacks. But I hope people can come out and just support these great kids from across our county. Real excited for them. We, it's, the program is for sixth to twelfth graders. We had a fifth grader that wanted to participate, so we said, sure, you can participate. And so, pretty dynamic individuals. So I hope you can come out and support these young, young kids. They're doing a great job. That's all I've got unless you have questions for me.
Paul, I'm sure you said, but I missed it. What time is it on the twenty-ninth?
Yeah, it's from ten to eleven is when the trade shows will be going on. And then after that, we'll have the award ceremony. And certain people are certainly happy to come and stay for that as well. We'll do photo ops. And then I'm hoping to get the winner on KOFO for an interview at some point. So really, really, really proud of these kids.
And where on the campus?
Ganglish Gibson Building, the Student Union, main building there on the second floor. Thank you.
Thanks. Pat, anything?
Good morning. I just want to give a little update on our software. Next year, next week, we will have our entire staff, including myself, completing our online training to go live. I believe the week after, we'll be going live. All of our permitting, all of our inspections, everything is going online. We're only going to streamline the process of how the building, in fact, environmental health, the building department and zoning all do their permitting system. So we're real excited. It's been about eight months coming, but we're finally seeing the finish line. We're, we've got our equipment. It's been handed off to our sanitation and to our building officials. So we're real excited to get that going. And, and with Dustin's help, we have a couple of last-minute things to adjust. And then I think we'll be, we'll be good to go. And we're going to have to get with our communications director to get something online so that there's a new format and way of doing things as far as business with the public. So pretty excited about that. Just want to give you guys a quick heads up and, excuse me, update. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Sheriff's Office.
Morning.
Good morning.
Last week, I mentioned that we were going to be hosting some training for estate planning and those things for our staff and their families. I just wanted to let you guys know that our HR director, Amy Hoda, was part of that. And we appreciated her participation, especially since some of that was after, one of our sessions was in the evening. And, but she was there to help remind people that we need to keep up on who our beneficiaries are, what our benefits are that we've signed up for. Because, you know, sometimes you forget what it is that you, that you have. And so she was there to bring everything up and go over that within, with people on an individual basis. And it was very beneficial and much appreciated. So I just wanted to, to let you know. And the whole program that we had presented was at no cost to the county. The law firm that we had come in to do the presentation donated their time. And then they're donating some individual consultations as well that several people signed up for. And then they'll have a reduced rate for anybody that went through their program. But again, that was at no expense to the county. They donated their, their time and their services. And then I wanted to share a little bit, when, when we have a promotion process, traditionally what we've done is we've had those people who are up for promotion, they will present a project of something that they think needs to be implemented within the sheriff's office. We, we change that up every now and then and we do something different instead of the project presentation. But one of the projects that we had not too long ago was presented by now Sergeant Tanner Hendrickson. He ran into the fact that he realized that the people that were, that he was arresting and that we were dealing with and go to jail lots of times, their employment status was unemployed. And then he put together, and we've, you know, the studies show that unemployment and, and crime do go hand in hand. So he put together a project that, basically it is an employment assistance program that inmates will be eligible to participate in. In our jail, our agency will not be like recommending people for jobs. But we are going to help facilitate an employment process. There are several employers in the county who need workers who have reached out and asked about getting some, some programs so that they could, we could get people to that. So what we're going to be doing, we're going to be rolling this out here real soon. We have, we've contacted our kiosk company. Because you know, we do all of our communication with inmates through a kiosk system like a computer. They've placed a generic job application on that. So the inmates will be able to, to do that. The employers that are participating in the program will be able to get, to get access to that. And then we can help facilitate if they need to do interviews, things like that while the people are in custody. We're going to help facilitate this as best we can. With the goal being that employers in the, in the community who need workers can get lined up with people who are qualified workers to, to help do some of these jobs. I know that a lot of them are construction labor jobs. And that, that way, when that inmate is released, they have a job to go to. And we believe that this will be beneficial to, for them individually and then our community at large. And so we'll be rolling that out here really soon. I know Joanna has been helpful in making flyers for us to get, to get distributed out so that we can advertise that as well. So it's been a, it's been a big effort. Teamwork that was, that was in this and it was, it was Tanner's brainchild and we're letting him kind of run with that. He's, he's done a good job working, working through all that. So before we roll that out, we want to let you guys know that it is there. And it's something that we're just trying to do to help people out as best we can. So that's all I have this morning, unless you guys have questions for me.
Jeff, if you haven't, you might talk to Paul about that. He's a great liaison with the local businesses. Just talk about communicating it, marketing it. He would be a good one to...
Yep, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Can you answer the program, want to talk?
Good morning. Good morning. I just wanted to give you a further update about the station in Wellsville. I was there on Monday and they were in the process of cleaning up the site and actually insulating some of the walls. When we were there, the builder did stop by. Drywall is set to begin this week, so that timeframe that they had given us, end of March, beginning of April, that initial timeframe looks like that that's going to hold true. Just want to give you an update.
Go ahead, Dave.
I don't have much. Just want to let you know that our blade operators have been working extra hours, including Saturdays. We've been over most of the roads and eight of the nine blade districts at least once. Starting to get back over many of them a second time. One of the districts, District Four Oh Four, which is the Centropolis area and, and south of Waze, we don't have a full-time blade operator. We've been without one for, I don't know, three or four months now. And so we've had a fill-in operator working when possible in that district. And we're starting to, some of the adjoining blade operators slip over there and try to get those roads squared away as well. So we'll, we'll keep after it until things are in a little better condition. That's all I have.
Oh, I do have one thing. Just to put on your calendar, the canvas for the presidential preference primary, we have that set for the twenty-fifth of March, and that is a Monday morning. That's not a regular study session date, but we had to have it within a certain timeframe. And so that, that date sits and it's a time that you guys would normally kind of have for meetings anyways. So we went ahead and scheduled it that date. So just wanted to get that on your calendar.
March twenty-fifth?
At nine AM.
All right, Don?
My wife's birthday, so I'll remember.
Won't keep you long.
It's all right. I really didn't have anything, but kind of like maybe I better, you know? I know I thought about something. Pat, you guys just had a study session the other night. You might tell the commissioners what that was about and, and kind of what thoughts come out of that.
Yes, so we had a study session last Thursday. We had a multitude of different things to talk about. One being, we are looking at our sign regulation... One being, we are looking at our sign regulations. We're probably not going to do anything just now with those. We're going to wait until we maybe look at our comprehensive plan and do the whole changing of our regulations after the fact. The other main item was the solar project coming up, upcoming. We will be doing another meeting tomorrow. We'll be having our commission meeting on that, planning commission meeting on that. We're currently missing some information, so I wouldn't put a whole lot of praise onto it. But I'm working with the applicant to do some last-minute data gathering with him. He will then present, and public comment will be allowed at that point.
Might specify which solar.
I'm sorry, the solar project, sorry, thank you. The solar project based at the quarry to the north of town. It's a lot smaller than the one that has been going around, obviously. But yeah, that's what's going to be on the agenda tomorrow. We have some few other miscellaneous items. But nothing, the planning commission did a real great job of asking questions and trying to get as much data out of what we had, although limited, in concerns to the quarry itself. So.
Just to clarify, abundance of communication, because we have already had some interest in this. The folks who came on the seventeenth to introduce themselves and said they intend to later introduce
Correct.
Large solar project south of town. We have got nothing from them.
I have not heard anything from them since they spoke with you guys.
Began the application process, and there's.
That is correct.
We have no, no interaction with them yet on official, other than them coming introducing themselves. But the one you're talking about is
It's more of a single.
Requesting to put solar panels inside of an active rock quarry.
Correct. Correct. Again, we'll see how it goes tomorrow. And then it'll be in front of you guys probably in three weeks from then. Okay, thank you.
No, I wasn't really saying anything. But most of you know, years ago, we had a county highway improvement program, which was a representative from each township. And they did meet quarterly and discussed just the things you're talking about. Tell them all, no commissioner, just strictly Public Works, and then the representative from each township. And then, once or twice a year, they invited in the township boards. And they would give their list of problems or issues or whatever, you know. And they were all discussed at that time. And like I said, it was all strictly information. It wasn't, they didn't power anything, except for the director of Public Works that was there. He was the only one, or the road boss. So I thought it was a pretty good program. I know a lot of what it was for is not happening anymore. Like, we're not doing any new regulations. And that's what a lot of that went for. But it also went to a lot of the issues you're talking about also, and discussed between that group and the township board. And individuals could come in and join in on a meeting too, and maybe speak like you just did there a little bit. They weren't part of the, any kind of decision-making, just the idea and the thoughts part of it. So, but it ain't going away. It doesn't exist anymore. And so maybe a small bird is a, might not be a bad thing. That's all I got.
All right, Dan, cool.
Nor do I.
Roy?
Yeah, last night I went to E C A M board meeting. It's the first one we've had in a while because of weather issues. And basically, they're working on grants for head start, a pre-head start, and some reorganization within their departments to make them more efficient and that sort of thing. That's about it. I might ask David to answer a couple of questions that Mr. Walburn had about how the roads are prioritized, maybe, and who makes the decisions on where the rock goes, whether it's the road boss or the layman. How does that work?
Most of the time, the decisions on which road to rock and when to rock it is left to the blade operators. They know the districts. They drive those roads more than anybody else in our organization. And they know the roads, and so we let them drive those decisions. There are times when those decisions are changed by the foreman and the superintendent. And I weigh in on those on occasion as well. But primarily, it's the blade operators that make those decisions. Prioritizing the roads, the most efficient way to blade a district when you're doing normal maintenance is to start at one spot and work your way to the other end. Jumping around to individual roads is not efficient. However, in these times, with the road conditions the way they are, we are jumping around a little bit to take care of the worst situations as quick as possible. We are coordinating with the school districts on their bus routes to try to make sure that those are passable. So we are doing those things. We have road classifications in this county. We look at those. Those are typically the roads that are the highest vehicles per day. And those require more maintenance, more attention. And so those get bladed more often. We have some roads that we blade every week or every other week. It just depends on the level of traffic. And again, the blade operators in those districts know which roads those are, and that's where they focus their attention.
What kind of training does the blade operators have? Seems like I got mostly complaints about blade operators.
Yeah, so as you all know, we have had a lot of turnover in the last few years. So we have, I think, there'll be five of the blade operators. Once we fill, if we're ever able to fill the open position, we'll have five of them with less than three years of experience. The one in Mr. Walburn's district started late last summer. So he's been on the job less than a year. So the training that they get is they are assigned with a more experienced blade operator. They will work for several days to several weeks with those experienced blade operators to get familiar with the equipment and the basics of road maintenance. We have our road and bridge foreman, who is, he spent twenty-some-odd years in a motor grader and is arguably one of our, was one of our better operators that we've had. That individual will spend time with these blade operators, as will our superintendent. There is limited classes available in the state for this kind of training. But through LTAP, which is a, it's a joint program between KU and Kansas Department of Transportation, they fund this organization. They have a couple of classes that we send our blade operators to. Those are classroom settings, they're not hands-on. I know in the past, they have had folks come into the organization and provide a couple of days of training. That hasn't, what I've been told, that that hasn't gone very well. I have been actively looking for more hands-on training with a third party. And I have a lead on something that I'm trying to work through as we speak and have been since last fall. So I'm hopeful that here in the next few months that we'll be able to have this third party come in and provide more hands-on training for all of our blade operators. And I will tell you that it takes at least three years for those blade operators to get fully comfortable with having to maintain anywhere from eighty to a hundred miles of gravel roads. It is, that is a huge job that most people, you know, they may understand the general, you know, the how to operate the equipment. But until you've sat in one of those day after day, week after week, month after month, trying to maintain these gravel roads with varying levels of traffic on them, to different soil conditions, different weather conditions, all of those factors play into the quality of the road and what it takes to maintain a road. So what works in one district may not work exactly the same in another district because of those other conditions. And so it takes years, years, for these blade operators to get comfortable and to be proficient at what they do. And so it's not, it's not an overdone deal. And because we have so many new folks, it is, the quality of our roads is not the same district by district, simply because of the inexperience of some of our operators. And they're doing a good job. They are doing the best they can. And I'll tell you that all of the new folks, every one of them, learned a great deal during this snowstorm. We haven't had an event like that since 2010, I think, was the last time that there was this type of snow event. So trial by fire.
All right.
Yeah, let's hope that they don't see another one for a long time. That was a pretty unique one. Before I went on vacation, I went to Big Brother's Big Sister's coffee. If you have an hour a week that you can give to a child that could really use a good adult mentor, that would be an awesome thing. And then yesterday morning, I went to the Ottawa Chamber of Commerce Board. And then I went to my first meeting of the East Central Kansas Area Agency on edging board. Since it was my first time, I was kind of a newbie. But the takeaway I got from that is that the new director that they had for maybe three years, they are very happy with her performance. She realizes that you can't just keep hemorrhaging money forever. And one of the things that she's doing to help stop the hemorrhaging is to shut down some of the congregate places in some of our small communities. When you have, we get to rent a building, pay for the utilities, have the meals driven there from Ottawa for maybe four people a day, then it definitely is costing you a lot of money per meal. So they are changing to a voucher system, partnering with maybe a small restaurant in the community, where they can go and get a designated meal for four dollars, up to ten times a month. And that is, they're just getting started, but it's sounding like it's going to be a good program and save a lot of money. So anyway, I'm excited to be on that board, and that's all I have.